All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started with today's meeting of the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors. And I'd like to start by turning it over to Supervisor Hickman, who would like to introduce a special guest.
Caught me unaware, I had gum in my mouth, for everybody that didn't see that.
Okay.
Thank you Chairman Gates. Part of today's agenda is a proclamation acknowledging September as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. A key part of the Be Connected program, which Maricopa County is a part of, is that each of us have a role in connecting veterans and their families to support in needed resources. We all need to prepare ourselves with the knowledge and expertise to help those who need help. As many of you know, over 10% of our county employees are veterans. What many of us don't know is that nationally, 20 veterans die by suicide each day. That number is astounding, 20 per day. I'm blessed to have Luke Air Force Base as a neighbor. My family and I get to see and hear the power of our military every day. We must not forget that these veterans live in all of our districts and that they are our neighbors. Support and care takes many forms. As an employer, we should be at the forefront of that support. We are honored to have Scott Leach here today for the invocation and pledge. He is a Human Resources Manager for the Employee Relations Division here at Maricopa County. Scott served 30 days, or 30 years, active duty in the United States Air Force with his final assignment at Luke Air Force Base as the rank of Chief Master Sergeant. Scott joined Maricopa County six years ago after retiring from Luke, and has been instrumental with the county's veterans projects ever since. He sits on the statewide Be Connected Council and the Arizona Coalition of Military Families. Welcome Scott, and thank you for your continued service to our nation and the county.
All right, please rise for the invocation and pledge.
Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity to come together today. I ask that you watch over all and guide the leadership of Maricopa County as they move this organization forward in support of our residents. Lord, today we proclaim our support for the prevention of suicides in our community and in this country. This tragic epidemic takes the lives of 129 individuals in the United States every day, with three of those belonging to our neighbors here in Arizona. Father, I ask you to encourage those that need help to make a connection with a family member, a friend, or a helping agency, so they know that they are loved and valued. I also ask that you guide all of us to recognize when a loved one, friend, or acquaintance is struggling with life, and then make that connection with them so that they are supported through the difficult times. And I also ask, Father, for a special blessing on our military service members, veterans, and their families, who deal with the separation of deployments and untold horrors while fighting for our freedom. We lose 20 of these heroes to suicide each day, and I ask that you provide them with guidance and support when they need it most. In your name I pray, amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Leach, thank you so much for your words, both for the invocation and the pledge, and we appreciate your service. Thank you for your service to the country and your service to Maricopa County. All right, Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Sellers.
Present.
Supervisor Chukri.
Present.
Supervisor Hickman.
Present.
Supervisor Gallardo.
Here.
And Chairman Gates.
Here. All right, well, thank you very much, and now, we are pleased to have Jose Santiago with us, from Maricopa County Animal Care and Control, with a friend. Good morning, Jose.
Good morning, guys. This is a six-year-old Marisol. She is a Chihuahua mix of some type, probably a little beagle in her, and she is thrilled to be here today to let everybody know that we have had a very successful adoption weekend. We did a Labor Day special, and people did come out. We had several dozen adoptions on that day, as well as throughout the weekend. Marisol is a little bit of a senior gal, so she would go home for a reduced adoption rate, and she is at our west shelter at 27th and Durango, and is looking forward to somebody out there maybe connecting with this sad little face, and taking her home and letting her live her golden years with them rather than in the shelter. So this is Marisol.
Well, wonderful. Thanks for bringing her. Again, as I've mentioned, I've got a couple senior dogs at home, so always happy to see when you have the senior ones who want to bring a lot of smiles and happiness into families here in Maricopa County. And again, Jose, thanks for all that you and the team do. Great to see ya.
Great job.
All right, okay, now we're gonna move to an addendum item, and this is Item A1, to appoint a Justice of the Peace for the McDowell Mountain Justice Court. And this time, open up to any comments or motions from the board.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a few comments, if I might. As you know, this is primarily in my district, and it has a bit of your district in it, and these justice courts, as we all know, serve a huge, huge, serve as a huge asset to our community and to Maricopa County, and we often refer to them as the People's Court, not with Judge Wapner, but the People's Court in that it's very representative of the communities that we serve. And so, we don't take this as a board, I know we've all made an appointment along these lines, we don't take it lightly, and we look at process, we look at the importance of the jobs that these individuals serve on a daily basis, which some courts are very stacked with work. And so, this was a seven-week process, we had six applicants. To me, it's very important that we establish that they are residents, that they didn't just move in, that their party affiliation didn't just occur right after the vacancy occurred, that they are electable, that they go through background checks, which I'm really grateful to our HR team for doing. And so, with all of that, we had great candidates, and it's never an easy decision, but my decision today, given the overwhelming letters of support, the metrics I just mentioned, would be to nominate Michelle Reagan for the Justice of the Peace for the McDowell Mountain Precinct effective today.
All right, well, thank you for that motion. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments from members of the board or discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just real briefly, Michelle Reagan and I started our political careers together back in, I think, 2002. We were the incoming freshman class, it was like the largest freshman class to be elected to the state legislature, and so I had the honors of being able to work with her, not only in the House, but the Senate. We didn't always agree, but we, there was times we did. She was always fair, she always looked at everything from a big-picture-wise, and took the partisan politics out of it, which is sometimes very hard to do down there at the Capitol, but she was a great person to work with, and we, she was always cordial, we're always, we may not agree, but we were cordial, and we were friends. And she actually sat right in front of me, I think, on the Senate floor, so we were able to talk a lot. So, I think she will make an excellent candidate there at the Justice Court. These justice courts are so important, I mean, these are, these are like the beacon of justice. I mean, these are the houses where people with very little pocket money could go and seek justice, and that's what they're all about. And I think she will make an excellent judge there, and I look forward to supporting the motion.
Thank you very much. Anything further? All right, well, I would echo the comments, both of Supervisor Chukri and Supervisor Gallardo. Thank you Supervisor Chukri, for all the time you put into this and the analysis. I couldn't agree more, it's extremely important appointment that the board has the responsibility for. I, as well, have known Michelle Reagan for many years, and I salute Michelle for her service over the years to the state, both in the legislative branch and then more in executive position as Secretary of State. She knows the district, the precinct extremely well, and I know we'll do a great job dispensing justice, because it is, it is a very important and solemn responsibility that our justices of the peace have. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, and if you would please join us up at the lectern.
Oh, yes, absolutely. First off, a huge thank you to the entire Board of Supervisors, and especially Supervisor Chukri and Chairman Gates. You had a very robust application process, and it was appreciated. It's no coincidence that the lower jurisdiction courts are called justice courts, and I think each of you touched on that. Impartial and speedy access to justice for our constituents is what the justice courts are all about. Maricopa County has among the best court system in the nation, and so, I'm gonna do everything in my power to uphold the high standards that the courts have and that the Board of Supervisors have. I am so thankful for this opportunity, and I'm really excited to get to work. Thank you.
If you would like to stand on that side, so you're facing the, right around here. And if you would raise your right hand. I, Michelle Reagan.
I, Michelle Reagan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
Of the state of Arizona.
I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of Justice of the Peace, McDowell Mountain Precinct.
Of Justice of the Peace, McDowell Mountain.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. [applause]
Again, congratulations, and thank you so much. All right, next, we have, under the Board of Supervisors, number five, which is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month Proclamation. Madam Clerk, I know we just wrapped up here, but we, Deb, if you would be so kind, is to read the proclamation for us.
I would be happy to, Chairman. This is the proclamation for the National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, September 2019. Whereas suicide is a major public health problem in the United States that has a lasting effect on family, friends, and communities, and whereas suicide is the 10th-leading cause of death in the United States, and the number-two killer of young people ages 15 to 34, and whereas 129 individuals in the United States experience death by suicide each day, with an average of one death by suicide occurring in Arizona every seven hours, and whereas approximately 20 of our United States veterans that served and defended our country die by suicide each day, and whereas September is National Suicide Prevention Month, and September 10th is World Suicide Prevention Day, and whereas providing support services to those at risk for suicide, talking about suicide, reducing access to means of self-harm, and maintaining a close connection with loved ones can help prevent a tragic loss of life, and whereas sharing suicide prevention messaging on social media shows that once an individual with suicidal thoughts connects with another person, their chances of following through with suicide significantly diminishes. Now therefore be it resolved that the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim September 2019 as Suicide Prevention Month, and calls upon our citizens to be bold and let others know that you are there for them, because one suicide is always one too many.
Thank you so much, Deb, for reading those powerful words. I would entertain a motion or any discussion on this item.
I get the motion first.
Motion to approve the resolution, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. We have a, do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Supervisor Gallardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, this is always a very important issue to continue to have some type of discussion in a public forum, particularly when our young folks, I know there's a little discussion on veterans as well, that's very important as well, but particularly our young folks. Many of our kids throughout Maricopa County or state face tremendous challenges socially and economically, and many of them just walk into school halls right now with no hope, they feel hopeless, they feel unloved, they feel, they have no idea where to turn for help, and we see this all the time. There's, you know, our young people are always, when they don't feel the attention, or they don't feel the love, they don't feel any type of direction or hope, they turn to bad things. Let it be substance abuse, let it be violence, let it just be suicide. And I think it's important for us to continue to remind ourselves and have these types of discussions. I talk about this all the time at our local school boards, the need for counselors and social workers. These kids need to know that they are loved, that they are okay, even though they may have some challenges in their own home or neighborhoods, that there are people here to help. And I think this is just a reminder of how government can really play a role in making sure that services are available, that these kids are pointing in the right direction when they're looking for some type of help and they're crying for help. So, I'm glad and pleased to see this proclamation come forward, and I think it just continues to remind us that we do have young people, and veterans, as it indicates, that need help, and I think it's a role that government can play, so.
Well said. Thank you. Anything further? I would just echo those comments, and again, the statistic that really stands out for me is the fact that for young people going up to 34-years-old, suicide is the second-largest cause of death among young people. So, so many of us have people that are important to us at home or elsewhere, friends in the community, they're in that age, so we can't, we can't ignore this issue. I'm proud of this board, that we're speaking out on this, and it is something that is so important, and like Supervisor Gallardo said, as well within our, among those in the veteran community. So, we stand with them, and with that, we do have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, that proclamation passes unanimously. Next, we go into our planning and zoning items on the consent agenda. We have PZ1, which is the Treviso Industrial Site, PZ2, which is Bolterra, PZ3, Apache Trail Rezone, and PZ4 is Replat Verde River Unit Lot 131. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker slips on these items?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right. Well, then, at this time, the board will consider Consent Agenda Item PZ1 through PZ4.
Move for approval.
Thank you Supervisor Sellers. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Hickman. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Those items pass unanimously. Next, under Statutory Hearings, Clerk of the Board, we have number six. These are the liquor license applications. A is a new license for Kobe Ramen. B through H are special event licenses for the Northwest Valley Democratic Club, Rancho Milagro Foundation, the Anthem Rotary Foundation, the Children's Museum Network, 180th Field Artillery Regiment Association, and Every Kid Counts, Inc. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker slips on item number six?
None, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then the board will now consider Items 6A through H.
Motion to approve Items 6A through H, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Thank you for the motion and the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously. Next, under Statutory Hearings, Transportation, we have 7A through T, and these are road files, as listed on the agenda. We also have number eight, which is the Patneasment Abandonment Road File, PAB-0098. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone here to speak on these items?
None, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then the board will consider Items seven and eight.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion, and we almost ran out of the alphabet on that one with the road files, man. Made it all the way to T.
All right, thanks for the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Sellers. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes. Under County Officers, we have Recorder Number Nine, Official Appointments and Oaths of Office. Under the Sheriff, we have Ten Donations. Eleven is an MOU with Juvenile Probation, and twelve is to amend an agreement with Grand Canyon University. Under the Treasurer, we have Thirteen, which is Clearing Uncollectable Tax, and Fourteen, which is Tax Abatements. The board will now consider Items nine through fourteen.
Move to approve Items nine through fourteen, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Hickman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Gallardo. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes. Under County Officers, we have Recorder Number Nine, Official Appointments and Oaths of Office. Under the Sheriff, we have Ten Donations. Eleven is an MOU with Juvenile Probation, and twelve is to amend an agreement with Grand Canyon University. Under the Treasurer, we have Thirteen, which is Clearing Uncollectable Tax, and Fourteen, which is Tax Abatements. The board will now consider Items nine through fourteen.
Move to approve Items nine through fourteen, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Hickman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Gallardo. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes. Under Human Resources, Thirty-one, we have Market Ranges. Under Human Services, we have Thirty-two, which is Acceptance of Grant Funds from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. Under Parks and Recreation, we have Thirty-three, which is an application for 100 Miles and 100 Days Challenge Trade Name and Trademark. Very pleased to see that. Thirty-four, Donations. Thirty-five through Forty-seven, Termination of Commercial Management Concession Agreements. And finally, Forty-eight is Maricopa Trail Agreement. The board will now consider Items Thirty-one through Forty-eight.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Chukri. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Sellers. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes. Next, under Procurement, we have Forty-nine, which is McDOT HVAC Upgrades. Upgrades, fifty, is Pharmacy Benefit Manage, Manage Services. Under Public Health, we have Fifty-one, which is an agreement with Southwest Behavioral and Health Services. Fifty-two is a purchase order for an IGA with the Arizona Department of Health Services. Fifty-three is to amend the IGA with Phoenix Elementary School District. Fifty-four, Notice of Award for Grant Funds from the Centers for Disease Control. And fifty-five is a contract with the Arizona Department of Health Services. Under Real Estate, we have Fifty-six, which is to amend a license agreement with the Town of Gilbert. Board will now consider Items Forty-nine through Fifty-six.
Move. All second with a comment.
Perfect. Yes, please.
So my comment is, on the last bit that we just approved, I apologize. I wanted to compliment RJ because of all those terminations we did with our parks. That's just good cleanup, I think that's good housekeeping, and that's good business. So, if we're not utilizing all those contracts, then why have them? So RJ, you're out there somewhere, there you are, even wearing a tie. So, congrats to you, and we commend you for doing that.
Yes, I agree. Great, great point. All right, so any other comments? If not, we do have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes. Next, under Procurement, we have Forty-seven, which is McDOT HVAC Upgrades. Upgrades, fifty, is Pharmacy Benefit Manage, Manage Services. Under Public Health, we have Fifty-one, which is an agreement with Southwest Behavioral and Health Services. Fifty-two is a purchase order for an IGA with the Arizona Department of Health Services. Fifty-three is to amend the IGA with Phoenix Elementary School District. Fifty-four, Notice of Award for Grant Funds from the Centers for Disease Control. And fifty-five is a contract with the Arizona Department of Health Services. Under Real Estate, we have Fifty-six, which is to amend a license agreement with the Town of Gilbert. Board will now consider Items Forty-nine through Fifty-six.
Move. All second with a comment.
Perfect. Yes, please.
So my comment is, on the last bit that we just approved, I apologize. I wanted to compliment RJ because of all those terminations we did with our parks. That's just good cleanup, I think that's good housekeeping, and that's good business. So, if we're not utilizing all those contracts, then why have them? So RJ, you're out there somewhere, there you are, even wearing a tie. So, congrats to you, and we commend you for doing that.
Yes, I agree. Great, great point. All right, so any other comments? If not, we do have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Next, under Real Estate, we have Fifty-seven, which is Arizona Public Service Grant of Utility Easement. Now, this item does require a unanimous roll-call vote, so just keep that in mind. Do we have a motion on Item Fifty-seven?
Motion to approve Item Number Fifty-seven, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Hickman. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Sellers.
Aye.
Supervisor Chukri.
Aye.
Supervisor Hickman.
Aye.
Supervisor Gallardo.
Aye.
Chairman Gates.
Aye. And so, that motion passes unanimously. Next, under Transportation, we have Fifty-eight, which is Annexation by the City of Peoria. Fifty-nine is a Road Abandonment Road File, AB-322. Sixty is a motion, portion of parcel as excess for sale to the City of Goodyear. Sixty-one is easement right-of-way and relocation assistance documents. Under the Board of Supervisors, we have sixty-two, which is Appointment to the Community Development Advisory Committee.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, on Item Number Sixty, where it says that they are going to declare as excess a portion of the parcel, the department has added to that a piece of backup which shows exactly how much of the parcel, it's a very small piece, approximately 40 feet by 318 feet long, but I just wanted to put that into the record that we now have the parcel identified in size.
Perfect. Thank you for that clarification, and it'll be noted for the record.
With that clarification, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Chukri. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Hickman. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Now, we go into the setting of hearings. Under Transportation, we have Sixty-three, which is Road Files Number A658. And under Air Quality, we have a number of items, sixty-four, Open Outdoor Fires and Indoor Fireplaces at Commercial and Institutional Establishments. We have sixty-five, which is Residential Wood Burning Restriction, and sixty-six, which is Incorporation by Reference. And I see we have Phil McNeely here, and Phil, thanks for all that you and the rest of the team at Air Quality do. Now, we do have, at this time, I'd ask that the board consider Items Sixty-three, Sixty-five, and Sixty-six. Do we have a motion on those items?
Motion to approve Items Sixty-three, Sixty-five, and Sixty-six, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great. Thank you Supervisor Hickman. And do we have a second?
Second.
All right, I'll give that one to Supervisor Chukri. Motion and sec, because he got it, that's right. Motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? And then it did, okay, motion passes unanimously, and Supervisor Chukri?
Mr. Chairman, just in abundance of caution with my role as the President and CEO of the Arizona Restaurant Association, I'm going to, I have declared a conflict on Item Number Sixty-four, so I'm gonna step off the dais.
Okay. Perfect. You will be missed.
I know you will.
All right, as Supervisor Chukri steps out, we will go ahead and handle Item Sixty-four at this time. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of Items Sixty-three, Sixty-four, Sixty-five, and Sixty-six.
Okay, so we've already done Sixty-three, Sixty-five, and Sixty, so this will just be on Sixty-four?
You're right. I apologize, I'm reading the screen here.
No problem.
I move approval of Item Sixty-four.
Excellent. Excellent. All right, thanks for that motion. Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a second. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? And just noting for the record that Supervisor Chukri did not participate in that vote. And now we can go ahead and have him come back in and join us. Welcome back.
The control room is far cooler than out here, just for the record, Mr. Chairman. So I'm going to make my votes from there.
Okay. Yeah, and we did have an HVAC item earlier. I think it was McDot, but we will, we can go ahead and take a look into that. The warm summer is wearing us all down, including the AC in here perhaps. All right, on to the consent agenda. Sixty-seven donations. Sixty-eight duplicate warrants. Sixty-nine is the Head Start Monthly Report. Seventy is stale dated warrants. Seventy-one, tax abatements. Seventy-two, treasurer's collections and investment summary for July 2019. Seventy-three is secured and unsecured tax rule corrections. Seventy-four, precinct committeemen. And seventy-five is settlement resolution of property tax cases and claims. The board will now consider items sixty-seven through seventy-five.
Move to approve items sixty-seven through seventy-five, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Hickman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Gallardo. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously. Now, we're actually going to recess as the Board of Supervisors, and we'll convene as the Flood Control District Board of Directors. We have item F1, which is to declare, sell, and access parcel, portion of FCD Rittenhouse RD-16. F2 is a contract with Gavin &amp; Baker, Inc. And F3 is an easement right-of-way and relocation assistance documents. The board will now consider items F1 through F3. Thank you Supervisor Sellers. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Gallardo. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously. And now we're going to adjourn as the Flood Control District Board of Directors, and we will reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. And this is the time, this is item seventy-six, which is a time that's set aside for public comment. And so, having the clerk provide me with the speaker slips, thank you very much. I do appreciate that. Looks like we have a number of speaker slips here on the same topic. We do have, looks like we have about six of them here that have indicated a desire to speak in favor. And then we have several others here that do not indicate a desire to speak, but again on the same topic. So given that, then I'll go ahead and call up the people who have indicated interest in speaking. And we'll go through those. Just so you know, we do have two minutes, and that's what we do on all public comment. You have two minutes to speak. And also did want to let you know that under Arizona state law, we here up on the dais are not able to respond to the comments that you might make, but we may refer any issues that are raised to the county manager to possibly follow up with you on those. But I just wanted you to know that when we don't respond, it's not out of disrespect for anything like that, but it's actually mandated by Arizona state law. And again, we appreciate all of you taking the time out of your busy days to come down and speak to us today. And I will apologize in advance if I mispronounce people's names. Again, not meant as any disrespect, but we are very grateful for you coming down today. So the first one we have is Pam Leeds Ragborg. If you could, what was that?
Perfect.
Oh, all right. Wow, that doesn't happen very often.
No, not to me, absolutely.
Thanks for joining us, and good morning.
Thank you for listening to me, and thank you for all you do. I imagine that all of you have administrative assistants. Maybe there's a pool of admins who work for you, and they all know each other. Imagine that one day the AC in their office area stops working. The admins get together and ask the facilities manager if the AC unit can be replaced. The manager tells them there's a brand-new AC unit sitting in a county warehouse, but it won't be delivered for a few more months. The public reads about the high office temps on social media and chips in to have fans delivered. But when they arrive, the facilities manager tells the admins he doesn't have time to take the fans out of the box. Imagine that these ladies have a private email group where they discuss work issues, including the heat in their office. "Hey, maybe we should get all the admins to bring in temperature gauges tomorrow," one writes. Imagine that another of the admins in this private email group, who's hoping to move up the corporate ladder, shares the email thread with the facilities manager, who shares them with you. On the basis of that comment, what is the likelihood that you would fire those admins? Would they be given a warning first, put on probation? And for what, a private message? Now imagine that these admins aren't paid employees but volunteers who have given their blood, sweat, and tears in a collective hundred hours a week in service of the county's abandoned dogs. Imagine the mindset of a director who would conjure up a reason to keep out admittedly great volunteers because they spoke critically about high temps in the kennels and were critical of an employee who couldn't be bothered to help distribute ice to the dogs on a sweltering Phoenix summer day. These volunteers aren't asking for damages, though they have most certainly been damaged reputationally and by infliction of distress. They're only asking you to make it right, to reinstate them to their volunteer positions so that they can continue to save county dogs. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your time. Thanks for coming down. Next, we have Anita Osa.
I'm going to be reading a statement from Lisa Lox Johnson. She was not able to be here today. I want to start by asking you why you think we are here today. Do you have, do we have anything to gain from lying? If county truly did nothing wrong regarding the temperature, why the email from Jose with a subject line of "We are being watched"? Why were the swamp coolers fixed if they were not broken? There are photos showing it was not in the mid-eighties, as some are claiming, as early as last night on Facebook. I contacted the media, along with two other rescue people. We are not going to go away. The bullying, silencing, and double standards are no longer. We will not stand for it. You have violated the civil rights of Lorena, Jordan, and Erica. They have dedicated over 10,000-plus hours to county. Let that sink in, 10,000 hours. How cowardly of MCACC to fire these ladies without any due process. I think you should look into Conick versus Myers or Border Supervisor versus Bellot and reinstate these volunteers before this goes any further. Clint Hickman, why don't you ask your chief of staff what he really thinks of animals? After his post last night, I am shocked and appalled. You should also ask Mr. Jose Santiago what the video is about that he created, or just listen to the song by Taylor Swift. You need to calm down, and I'm sure you will figure it out. Why is it any different for your paid employees to post such things on social media, but the volunteers could not have a private conversation without fearing termination? I will finish by stating again, why do you think we are here today? And again, what do we have to gain from lying? I am calling for a reinstatement of the volunteers and some serious changes at county. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming down and reading that statement. Good morning. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. I am Kathleen Bow, and I am the mother of Lorena Bader and the grandmother of Jordan Bader, who were two of the ladies that were fired, that were mentioned in this, the previous speakers. I volunteered for about one and a half years at the county shelter because I saw Lorena doing so much for our abandoned animals. I did not work with the animals, only in the office, where I observed the habits of management. I watched Lorena, day after day, work with difficult animals that the staff couldn't handle, and this resulted in her being violently attacked by a dog the staff asked her to get out. It ended in hand surgery and permanent damages and scarring. But she was back a week later. She kept it private to avoid adverse attention to the staff and the shelter. But I do have some pictures that I'd like to share of the injury. Jordan is employed five days a week, and then she comes in on her two days off to work with the senior dogs, the eight-year-olds or older. And she networks on social media, thus saving hundreds of animals from death over there. These three ladies were fired without knowing why because they tried to protect our defenseless animals that are supposed to be kept safe from harm. Instead, the shelter tries to cover their neglect. The shelter environment is toxic, and management attempts to control, retaliate, threaten, and punish anyone who speaks up about conditions that need change. We need someone who really cares about animals to come and make changes to protect our animals, someone who shows respect to the people who actually do the work that many staff members do not do. Thank you very much. May I pass these?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for coming down. Thank you for your words. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank everyone in the room here and those who are your friends and family members who volunteer with the Animal Care and Control here in Maricopa County. We greatly appreciate all that you do for our animals in our county. Next, we have, I'm going to put the glasses on here, Adrian Ayala?
Yes.
Yes, please join us. Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
I'm here on behalf of the welfare for animals of the county. 2018, the officials knew the cooling systems didn't work. How I know this? They were down there wrestling ice pools and repairment. Last year, I want to know why the cooling systems weren't fixed to be ready for this year that has record-setting temperatures, starting in April, triple digits. Director knew about it. Everybody knew about it. And yet, nothing was done until the community comes up and brings it to social media of 108 temperatures. Dogs were suffering down there, and nothing was being done. There's many things and events going on down there. There's lots of smoke and mirrors going on. I would like to know when we're going to get the cooling systems fixed. The answer to the cooling system getting brought to the news media by Mary Martin, the officials, was fire three volunteers that were the face and voices of those animals, known by 40,000 people, to network and save lives. I am here to ask to bring those volunteers back that were wrongly fired, that has cost more lives, and get our systems fixed. I want answers, audits. Where is all of the donations? The budget going? It's not being in the cooling system. I've got two years of Board of Supervisors meetings that I went through, and not one special meeting did I find anything about cooling systems being fixed for the last year could have been fixed before we came into this sweltering heat. I appreciate your time and attention, and answering emails. Haven't gotten any response from anyone of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for joining us, and thanks for your words. Next, we have BJ Bevins.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for listening to me. I'm also here in support of Jordan and Lorena and Erica. I too am a volunteer, and I've worked beside those women, and I've seen how much they love and care for those animals. I don't have a script. I'm talking to you from my heart. I know it's a hard, I know it's hard on everybody down there, but I also know, as an Arizonan, that I've lived here for a long time, and I can walk into a hot room, and I know when things are hot. A little while ago, Councilman, I'm sorry, I don't know how to say your name, but you made reference to how much cooler it is in that room over there, and I'm very comfortable in this room right here. Can you imagine being held in a kennel in 108 degrees and not able to get out and not able to get any more water than what's in your bucket and being at the mercy of whoever takes pity on you? Jordan and Lorena and Erica go down there, as well as a bunch of us, and take care of those animals and pull them out and get them into some air conditioning or a little bit cooler temperature. But I don't think you, as individuals that are not there all the time, realize what those animals go through and are literally at our mercy. So I hope you do reconsider and let those people be reinstated. Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us today. The final speaker slip I have here is Marie Sprout?
Sprudy.
Sprudy. Good morning.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I am not a volunteer. I have volunteered in the past at other kennels. And I'm a grandmother now, and I have two grandkids that I, I'm a full-time grandma. So I'm here because I have watched the tireless efforts of all the volunteers in the county kennels. I've been down there. I know the animals get hot. But I'm very frustrated because I can see how much work, the tireless, the hours they put in, the love they put in, the care for these animals, cats, dogs, and others, other pets that could be there. So I'm here saying, just as a member of the public, we need to have some kind of forum that holds management accountable. You know, they get the budget, and we don't have, we have no answers for where the money goes. Why aren't you fixing the AC? Dogs are dying. They're having seizures. So we need to first fix these problems. Let's have a group for, a public. You can have veterinary members, members of the public, a couple of ex-volunteers, a teacher, people who love animals to say, you know what, we're going to hold you accountable. Let's get a process in place to hold. The volunteers need to be held accountable too, but we can't put the cart before the horse. If these are the policies, okay, social media, let's make it for everybody, for Jose, for Mary, and for everyone. But right now, we cannot put the cart before the horse. I don't have a prepared statement, so I'd like to apologize for that. I got in on an airplane. I changed my flight to come in to be here on behalf of these volunteers. I have several dogs at my home that I have rescued currently and have rescued in the past. So having said that, I'd like to read a statement from Nebula Clement. She's in a group called The Changemakers. "I'm so scared to ever say anything. The dogs look so hot. I don't know what to do. One dog let me spray his paws with water. I made sure it was cool first, and he seemed so hot and thankful, so hot, panting really bad. Every time I passed the outside portion of his kennel, he looked at me, so I sprayed his paws down. I bet if anyone saw me do that, I would get in big trouble. Even though I was not being cruel, I was trying to help him cool down. I see so many hot dogs, and they have no AC system."
I apologize, your time is...
Okay, that's okay, but you got the point. We need to work with the volunteers and work with management, work with the people who are, hold them all accountable before we just start issuing termination notices.
Thank you very much, and thanks for changing your...
And thank you, Lorena, Jordan, and Erica. Thank you.
Yes.
Chairman, I need to let a speaker forth?
I did as well. It's the other pile.
Okay, so if they're, what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the names of folks who did not indicate a desire to speak. And if you do want, if you do want to come up and speak, you can speak, but I would ask, you know, if you can keep your comments focused on points that haven't been made already. I think the speakers who've spoken already have made very effective points, so if you have things to add. So I'm just going to read through, so Callie Wolf? You'd like to speak? All right, come on down, please.
I don't know where to begin because there's many issues that need to be brought to attention, but I don't understand how county officials are saying that the temperatures were only 80 degrees when my temperature at my house is set at 80 degrees, and the dogs are perfectly fine in my house. dogs are perfectly fine in my house. So with that being said, I stand here today and ask you these redundant questions. After your long work week, do you spend your days off being slobbered, peed, and pooped on? Do you spend hours sitting on the hard concrete floor next to a dog that you know is going to die in less than an hour because it has nowhere to go, that is scared out of its mind because it has lost everything it ever knew? Do you carry the burden of falling in love with a sweet dog that was dumped by its family and it shows you nothing but love and kindness just to watch it be euthanized the next day because it doesn't fit the criteria? These are some of the many hats these volunteers wear doing their volunteer duties. These girls spent hundreds of hours doing over and above the jobs of the shelter employees, get paid to do, and they do it for free, saving the shelter thousands of dollars. They network each rescue and do everything they can to save as many dogs as they can and have successfully saved thousands of these dogs. I ask you, why and how could you cut out a volunteer that worked so hard from an already underfunded and overpopulated shelter that has done nothing wrong to warrant being fired? How can you take these dogs that have very little left and let someone's personal opinion determine the rights for someone to spend their time and help with these dogs that already have done next to nothing? Please overturn the decision of firing these volunteers, put the dogs first, and let these volunteers continue to do their amazing work.
Thank you very much. We have Steve Sprout.
I'm not going to speak.
Thank you for being here, appreciate it. Haley Hannigan? Would you care to speak?
Yes, I would.
All right. Thanks for joining us. Good morning.
Good morning. I am here to ask that the Board of Supervisors and Maricopa Animal Care and Control to implement a clear consequence matrix for the dismissal of volunteers, and that if they refuse to reinstate the volunteers for private comments, that they also dismiss volunteers who have made comments publicly that were detrimental to the shelter. The comments that were made last year was the release of an internal email by a volunteer. It resulted in death threats to Mary Martin and bomb threats to the Maricopa Animal Care and Control Shelter itself. That volunteer was given the opportunity to go into a meeting with administration, plead her case, and was consequently reinstated. That opportunity was not provided to the three volunteers who were dismissed. They got no answers, they were dismissed without being able to plead their case. That is unfair and unjust. If you're going to have volunteers being dismissed for comments that are made privately, taken out of context, and then released to the entire email list of Maricopa Animal Care and Control, then there needs to be accountability to dismiss any volunteer who speaks out publicly. There was also another volunteer who was dismissed for a comment made on the private MCACC page. She called the shelter a hostile work environment and was emailed and told not to return to the shelter until she had a meeting with administration. She had a meeting, she was allowed to plead her case, and she was reinstated and is a current volunteer at Maricopa County Animal Care and Control. So why the difference? Why is it that some volunteers are allowed to speak derogatory and some aren't? Some are allowed to plead their case and some aren't. I would very much like an answer to why there seems to be a difference depending on who is the one speaking out. Thank you.
Thank you very much for joining us today. Mackenzie Baker? Do you wish to speak?
Yes. Hello.
Morning.
Good morning. My name is Mackenzie Bader, and I'm reading this letter on behalf of Lorena Bader, who was fired from MCACC. "Good morning. I'm writing this because Mary Martin and the management team at MCACC have violated our right to privacy and, more importantly, our civil rights. The comments that were made were from a private group chat on Messenger. They should have never been used as a reason to fire us and should never have been shared with thousands of people through the news and mass emails. None of us conspired to undermine county nor denigrate an employee on social media. A little bit about me that should have made you question why I was fired with no notice while on vacation. I've been in the state, I have not been in the state since July 10th, long before the temperature mess. I have helped the adoption, behavior, and alternate placement teams daily when they were short-staffed or when something, someone needed my expertise. I was bitten more than once, but was recently attacked by a dog, required surgery, and was left with a permanently disabled finger, but continued on helping with the shelter. I believe that Jordan Bader, Erica Edmark, and myself were fired because Mary Martin and Jose Santiago overreacted to comments that were taken out of context from a private conversation. Instead of looking into the situation in a calm, professional manner, they chose to fire us without even investigating the situation and give us an opportunity to explain the situation. Nathan Winograd, a renowned animal rights activist and attorney, recently shared our story and agreed that our firing was illegal and will not hold up in court. The management team at MCACC has created a culture of fear, intimidation, retribution, and secrecy. My goal is to bring attention to this and to work towards solutions that will make it a better environment for employees, volunteers, and the animals in their care. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Bader. Mimi Slavin, would you care to speak? Thanks for joining us this morning.
Pass this around, if you could just swipe either left or right. This is Gidget, and this is the four, during, and now. Gidget is a 10-year-old funky-looking little Chihuahua that's a little bit deaf, a little bit blind, and had a lump on her back that was the size of a softball. She was unable to be placed, and basically because of those people, Gidget now is laying by the pool. Nobody would touch her, she basically would not have gotten out. We got her out 15 minutes before they closed, and that was a dog that never stood a chance, and it's because of those people. I don't understand at this juncture why politics is going to impact these animals. They basically put in 100 hours a week. These animals are basically getting out of the kennel, they're being socialized, they're being loved, and they're being given a chance, and without that, none of them would have made it out. What I'd like to ask is, I guess the verbiage is, that the matter be placed on a future agenda, and give all the Gidgets a chance. It's volunteers, nothing more, nothing less. That's it.
Thank you very much for coming down and speaking today, we really appreciate it. Next is Jim Kenna-Haw, Kenna-Han? Would you care to speak? Thanks for joining us today.
I'm concerned about the animal, the county animal shelter. We've all seen the news reports and the social media banter. So here we have a team of people with the same objective, the same goal, animal care. No disagreement about this common objective, this great cause that everyone has, is centered on. So how can the management of such a universally accepted good cause go so bad? How can the goal of sheltering and adopting dogs and cats turn into an abuse of power and a violation of constitutional rights? As I watch the continuing news coverage, I can't help but ask myself, how much is this debacle going to cost taxpayers when it hits the courts? Why is it that this county continues to pay tax dollars time and time again for management I'm not the only taxpayer and voter that is concerned. Just to show of hands, who's here supporting an investigation and improvements in the county animal? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Annette Kenna-Han? Would you like to add some words? Thank you.
I don't volunteer. My expertise is money, and I am related, I'm Lorena Bader's sister. I've had some serious concerns about the lack of transparency of donations, conflict of, conflicts of interest, as well as the violation of Section 1983, which clearly protects volunteers from speaking out in their First Amendment rights, potential theft of donations by management, and even hiring practices. So as I mentioned, I have donated supplies and money to the shelter. After Arm abruptly left, which there's a lot of question about that, they formed Animal Amigos, which was a 501(c)(3). It turns out that some of the management at the rescue is on the board of the 501(c)(3), but that was not disclosed. Well, if you know anything about 501(c)(3), that needs to be disclosed. They took money, there was lack of transparency, misrepresentation, and it wasn't until the county attorney got involved that that got nixed. Now the money's sitting in limbo. We were promised that our donations, excuse me, would go to specific causes, nothing has occurred there. It's known throughout the shelter that donations that come through Amazon are directed to go to management, there's no inventory done, they're sorted, the things that they want, they take out to their car, and the other things they give to the animals. I find that extremely concerning, thinking the fact that I'm donating money, my hard-earned money, to this shelter, and it's not being used for its intended purposes, and I'm sure it's a concern to you guys too. As members of the board, I'm sure you all understand you have a fiduciary duty, right? And that fiduciary duty includes making sure that money's being used for its intended purposes, that there's not making up numbers for donated items, that they, the animals and volunteers are being treated humanely, that the rescue is not violating laws. In your own words, you said, "The role is important, and you have a solemn responsibility." I'm asking you to reinstate the volunteers, complete an audit, to really find out what's going on. If I can find out the stuff I found out in two hours, I can only imagine what would happen if you did a forensic accounting. And lastly, that you put in, you reinstate the volunteers, as I mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time today. Andrea Alden?
I would like to speak.
Okay, please join us, thank you.
I'm here to speak in support of the volunteers who were fired on August 1st. My goal is to demonstrate that similar cases have been decided in courts across the country in favor of the volunteers. First, in 2015, a U.S. District Judge ruled that the opportunity to serve as a volunteer with a government organization such as a shelter is a constitutionally protected benefit, and that the volunteers have the right to exercise constitutionally protected free speech without fearing retaliation from that organization. Second, legal precedent says that volunteers, along with members of the public, have a right to document things they believe are improper within a taxpayer-funded government agency. Their right to take photos and videos to assist in finding animals' homes is also legally established. The federal statute, known as Section 1983, has successfully been applied to punish action by the management of public shelters across the country when they retaliate against their volunteers for exercising their First Amendment rights. The current story from MCACC management is that these volunteers were fired for things they said in a private chat, which is legally questionable in and of itself. However, precisely because government officials are unlikely to admit that their punishments have exceeded the bounds of the law, courts have allowed plaintiffs to use both direct and circumstantial evidence to establish that their volunteers' rights were suspended in retaliation for exercising their rights. Such circumstantial evidence includes showing that the volunteers' privileges were withdrawn within a narrow timeframe around the time that they engaged in their protected conduct, and that no other valid or legal explanation was given. Using Section 1983, actual injury can be demonstrated simply by showing that the volunteer has suffered a loss of any governmental benefit or privilege. As the Supreme Court has stated, "A government entity may not deny a benefit to a person on a basis that infringes his constitutionally protected interests, especially his freedom of speech." Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time today. Jordan Bader? Would you care to speak? Good morning.
Hi. I have something to pass out to. Okay. Good morning. My name is Jordan Bader, I'm one of the three volunteers who was fired from MCACC. And I know you guys have heard a lot of stories, but I wanted to tell mine. First, about the temperatures. Volunteers and staff were concerned about the excessive heat in some of the buildings. We alerted supervisors, managers, and had people put in maintenance requests to fix the coolers. The kennels were still extremely hot with temperatures often above 95 degrees. After dogs started being affected, I sent the picture of the temperature gun reading and the dogs panting to two women who work in the rescue community. Other people contacted the media. Jose Santiago went onto the news and said they needed the public's help because the swamp coolers weren't working. On another news report, he stated that there was no problem. After the news reports, he sent out the email "They Are Watching Us" to inform staff to watch out for temperature guns and what to tell people and how they fix the problem. That email shows there is more concern for appearances than for the actual animals in their care. As a result of those pictures that I sent out, there were thousands of dollars' worth of supplies and materials donated for the dogs to the proper care during summer, which we were very happy. We were content with that, they're getting the help they need, and that's all. Two days later, we were fired. We did not find out, we got just a quick email saying, "You guys are no longer here, you can't come back, you need to turn in your stuff by a certain date." No reason at all why we were fired, and it was the shortest little paragraph, like we meant nothing to them. We did not find out for five days why we were fired. When he first talked to the media, Jose Santiago said it was a personnel issue that he couldn't discuss. Then MCACC changed course, and three hours later, they shared screenshots of our conversation in a private group chat on the news for thousands of people to see. It was a private group chat. In addition, management sent out an email to all staff, volunteers, and fosters why we were fired with the screenshots. We were never given the respect of an email, phone call, or conversation about the situation. The comments were taken out of context. Although county claimed that we conspired to undermine MCACC and degrade an employee on a social media platform, we did not. After dedicating the past five years to saving the lives of dogs at MCACC and establishing three Facebook pages with over 40,000 followers, I find it appalling that I have been treated the way I have been treated by management. Even after I was fired and have gone in as a member of the public last week, I have been harassed and discriminated against. Please ask yourselves what I have to gain by speaking out about conditions at MCACC. I will continue to network the dogs and support the employees who do work hard to care for the dogs. Our civil rights-
I apologize, your time is up, so if you could just wrap up, please.
Our civil rights have been violated, and we will continue to fight until we are reinstated.
Thank you very much for coming and speaking today. Next is Erica Edmark? Would you like to speak? Yeah, please, please come on and join us.
I would like to address the recent termination of the three county shelter volunteers and the very clear retaliation against us for exposing dangerous kennel conditions, retaliation that is illegal under federal statute, Section 1983. MCACC maintains that this was not retaliation and that the volunteers were fired over comments made in a private chat. However, on December 31st, MCACC, in an effort to censor volunteer concerns and opinions, gave us explicit information, or I'm sorry, explicit permission to say whatever we want about the shelter, both publicly and privately, on our own personal pages or private groups. So why were we actually terminated? The private chat in question has been going on about 18 hours a day for two years. Most of the time, it is about the needs of the animals, walks, vet attention, baths, adoption networking, et cetera. Occasionally, these concerns are due to the understaffing of the shelter, or yes, possibly negligence or complacency of the staff. Shelter administration received a few cherry-picked screenshots from this chat where the volunteers were discussing the shelter's incredibly poor reaction to the public being made aware of dangerous kennel conditions. Management took out of context facetious and, most importantly, private comments alleging that we had denigrated an employee and conspired to undermine the shelter. A simple review of these comments with context shows that we did neither of these things, but management's pride was hurt, and they seized this opportunity to retaliate. When many in the animal rescue community expressed their support for us on MCACC's official Facebook page, their comments were illegally deleted by staff and further illustrates that they have no qualms about violating civil rights to save face. Management has consistently proven over and over again that they have no regard for First Amendment rights and will put their own reputations and egos above the safety of the animals. They will continue to unconstitutionally censor anyone who doesn't toe that line. I urge the board to- I urge the board to reverse the decision to terminate the volunteers before this ordeal goes any further. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I also have some literature for you to read.
Thank you. Next, we have Elizabeth. I'm -- thank you. Thank you. Thanks for saving me there, Elizabeth.
Good morning. My name's Elizabeth. I've lived here in Arizona about 15 years. I have a degree in advanced behavioral health sciences, and I'm currently pursuing a doctor of behavioral health. I'm a concerned citizen. I would just like to say I don't know any of these volunteers outside of the professional environment. I adopted two dogs strictly from the social media group, so I'm not affiliated with these women. I don't know them personally outside of the shelter. Just like to say that. I'm really disturbed by the dysfunction and the -- of the management and whatever else has been going on. I've been hearing a lot of disturbing reports. I'm really upset, frankly, by the juvenile behavior and lack of basic conflict resolution skills or any type of policies for the volunteers and how everybody's getting treated differently. If you guys escape this without a lawsuit, you're very lucky. So hopefully you immediately reinstate these volunteers. Need to mitigate some of this damage. I'm currently in a research writing class at the university. If something doesn't happen immediately, I'm demanding changes, accountability, immediate reinstatement of these volunteers. I will be doing a SWOT analysis of the county if this does not happen. I'll be taking myself and other academics to do research on the weaknesses and failures in management at the county if something doesn't happen immediately. I will be following up on this as a patriot, as a taxpayer. Something needs to be done now. I'm not okay with this, and I will take further action if I don't see accountability and changes happen immediately. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Thanks for joining us. Next is Deana Rico.
Deana.
Okay, Deana. Yeah, great. Thanks for joining us and bringing a friend. Good morning to Jake.
Hi, guys. Like I said, I'm Deana. Before I started, I just wanted to say thank you for recognizing National Suicide Awareness Month. I suffer from a TBI and PTSD, which is part of the reason that I have Jake, who is also a rescue. I can hands-down say that he has saved my life on multiple occasions, either from side effects related to my injury or from other things. So I do want to say thank you. I didn't know that that was going to happen today, and I really do genuinely appreciate that. I'm in a bit of a unique position. I've not only worked as a shelter volunteer in Orlando and in Los Angeles, I also had planned on becoming a shelter director eventually. I was going to school for nonprofit management and public administration for my master's in Orlando when I was hit in the head with a golf club and suffered my TBI. I was lucky enough that I had spent three years volunteering for the shelter prior, and they actually helped sponsor Jake and get his training done and his medical care done. I moved here to be close to my parents to get help with my medical care. Instead of -- and I stood in a meeting quite like this, people quite like this, with the shelter staff and volunteers several years prior, speaking about my concerns in the Orlando shelter. Instead of firing me or asking me to not come back or limiting my rights, they opened their arms to me. I was allowed to shadow every single position, and my master's paper for my final semester was the impact that the relationships of volunteers and staff have on the animals. And it also went into how the relationships develop. I really am disappointed in the reaction. You've already heard those things, but as somebody who has seen other shelters work and how they operate, this is not the way it should be. This isn't -- this isn't legal. It's violating amendment rights, and we can do better, and we should do better. There's no reason for this. So I wish that you would take a look at the policies and procedures and what's been done, and I do have photos and videos if you're interested. I did stop by the shelter. The readings were 80 degrees. However, it was not 80 degrees in there. I'm the first one to put on a hoodie when I go into, you know, probably less than 90 degrees. I was sweating. I don't know if you noticed, my dog was suffering. When he came in here, I had to step out to give him water and cool him down with a cool cloth. So I know my time is up. I apologize, but I do have that experience that I wanted to share with you, and I'd be happy to share my study with you as well.
Deana, thank you very much for your time. Thanks for joining us. And again, I want to thank everyone who took the time to come down here and speak. We do appreciate your words. Okay, yeah. And what's your name?
I wasn't announced yet.
Okay, yeah. If you can come up.
I didn't want to share something that I haven't been sharing.
All right. Great, and this will be our last speaker. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you can just state your name and spell it for the record so that we have it in the record.
Certainly. It's Gwendolyn, G-W-E-N-D-O-L-Y-N. Last name, H-J-E-L-M-S-T-A-D. What I wanted to add to what has been said is, I work in healthcare. I work with humans. We have a Whistleblowers Protection Act. If one of my patients was left in a room that was 100 degrees, not only would we be expected to report it, we would be in violation and could get criminal charges and prosecution against ourselves if we did not report it. Those dogs were left suffering in over 100-degree kennels for weeks on end. I'm miserable in here, and it's not that hot. I don't imagine what those poor homeless animals that are scared were going through. And they, instead of saying, "Wow, our bad. We should fix this broken system," Mary Martin and the people in the administration are saying, "Let's look at these volunteers. Aren't they bad?" And that is completely wrong. They need to look in the mirror. They need to advocate for those innocent animals that have no one to advocate for them, but volunteers like these three ladies that were unjustifiably let go. I thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you for your time. Again, thanks to everyone for your time. As I mentioned at the beginning, we're just -- state law prohibits us from responding to the comments that you made, but please know, you know, I -- and I want to thank my colleagues here for sitting. Everyone was listening very closely to our staff as well, county manager, and we have representatives from Animal Care and Control. So again, want to thank you. Thank you for the time that you donate and the resources that you donate to Animal Care and Control. We greatly appreciate that. So now that takes us on to item number 77, and this is the opportunity for the supervisors and our county manager to make any announcements of current events. I'll start with Joy Rich, our county manager. All right. Supervisor Gallardo?
Nothing today.
Okay. Supervisor Sellers?
I'll be quick. We had a MAG Economic Development Committee meeting yesterday where there were presentations on smart regions, and we had the speaker from the Colorado Smart Cities Alliance, and our local presentation was by Dominic Tappa, and he is part of what is called a Smart Region Consortium. And they're doing some great work, partnering with ASU and others, and they plan to have a local region summit in November 13th and through the 15th of this year. So exciting things going on there. I'll also mention just quickly that I attended an ASU congressional conference on the future of water in our state. That was encouraging to hear some of the presentations there on the work that's being done. Our Jennifer Toth came and made a presentation at my East Valley Partnership Transportation Committee meeting a week ago, a very excellent presentation on what we're doing here at the county. And at the Gilbert Chamber Good Government Series, I had an opportunity to talk with Senator McSally about the importance of getting a federal long-term plan for infrastructure in place. She understands and seemed to be very supportive. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Vice Chairman.
Vice Chairman, I know that we have an executive session we have to get to, so I have nothing today.
All right. Supervisor Chukri?
Mr. Chairman, clearly Mr. Sellers does more work than all of us in the off time, but two great events this past week. One was with our -- my colleague, Mr. Hickman, when we got to go and talk about our roles here and also in the other part of our lives, in the restaurant and food industry. So I was gratified by that. And also, we had a presentation in Mesa. You know, we sometimes get so granular in what we do as a body, but it makes a difference. And they had some microbursts that occurred at the Mesa Cemetery, probably one of the oldest cemeteries in the state, where they lost close to 100 trees. And so we went and we started to help raise awareness on how important it is to replace those trees, to provide shade for those who are visiting lost family members. So those were two, I think, encouraging and neat things that I got to participate in in the past few weeks.
Well, thanks for that report. I appreciate it. The only thing I wanted to add is that we will be holding our next meeting for the New River Area Plan. Really grateful for all the people in New River, Desert Hills, and Anthem who've gotten involved in this process to really have a say about the future development in their area. The next meeting will be next Monday evening. I'll be out there with Zach and probably a few of our closest friends out in that part of District 3, and we'll be meeting 6:30 at Desert Mountain School in Desert Hills. Thanks, Jen, to you and everyone on your team for your great work on the area plan, and this is the first of many that we'll be doing across the county over the next couple of years. So with that, again, thank you to everyone for joining us, and have a great day. Meeting is adjourned.